At the Dunbar Elementary School Community Center, 20 Robert Rogers Road, Dunbar, New Hampshire. The purpose of this bond hearing is to accept public testimony on proposal to issue bonds or notes in an amount estimated to be $1.3 million for the design, permitting, construction, replacement, paving and installation of an estimated 13 miles or 608,640 linear feet of town maintained roads. The public may access this meeting through Zoom. And we have a lot of information. Okay, opening up this public hearing, I'm going to speak to this road bond issue. This has come up a couple of years in the road to the selectmen's office. We've kind of pushed this down the road a couple of times only because we had other big issues on the agenda. The difference being, we typically give our road agent an additional $100,000 under our warrant article. On our warrants, we've done it for all the years I've been selectman, several years before that. And that $100,000 helps him pave additional roads in this town to try and keep up with some of our paving and get ahead of it. This bond issue, and I'll tell you the roads that he's thinking about doing, he's given us a list and he's given us a dollar amount for those roads. This bond would allow us, in the next two years, to pave these roads and then have the next 10 years to pay for them. The bond amount, the payment, except for the very first year, would be less than the $100,000 each year that we're already giving the road agent. So basically, even though we're funding it currently, this will allow us to get all these roads done within two years that it normally would take us 10 years to do. So it would keep our, keep our ability to have this pavement done at a current rate as we know the bonds will be going up and the road aggregate material will be going This is based on estimates that we already have of $70 per ton of asphalt pricing. Barnard Hill Road is one of them at $99,000. Gorham Pond Road at $169,000. Black Brook Road at $204,000. Robert Rogers Road at $210,000. Montalona Road at $182,000. Twist Hill Road at $176,000. Flint Block Farms Road in Birch Brook at $142,000. Long Pond Road at $118,000. For a total amount of $1,300,000. We have a bond rating that we got. It takes them throughout the years until, until the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Association or Bank hears all of the bonds that are requested throughout the state. Their final rate in 2021 for a 10-year bond was 1.41%. So we've rounded it up to 1.5% to do our budgets on the bonds. And we also, in our warrant articles later on, you'll see that if this bond doesn't pass for some reason, it's on the first thing on the agenda on the town warrants, then we'll go back and do the warrant article for the $100,000 that we standardly have been putting in our warrants for a bunch of years. Whereas if this bond passes, that will null and void that warrant article and we will use that amount of money out of our budget on the following year as excess revenues to pay the bond down. So, that being said, I'll open it up to the floor for questions and we'll try and answer them. The road agent is present if anybody has a direct question for him as well.
Jeff, I think they want you to use this.
We have the mic up there on the chair.
Try and be there, be centralized.
They're going to be able to see him on the camera, but they'll be able to hear him.
Is this on?
Push it up.
How about now?
Sure.
Okay. Jeff Trexley, Barnard Hill Road. Question on the bonding. You've got a sample, a bond schedule here, which looks like a 10-year bond. You'd mentioned the payments would be about the same as the $100,000 we've been doing each year. Here it looks like your total calendar year payments are $198,000 down to $152,000. Am I misunderstanding?
That is a sample bond of $1,000,005,000, $1,003,000. That's a, I believe you can have their bond.
Well, we don't have it yet, so why don't you have the sample?
You could print it me up, the sample showed our first payment, $132,000 going down.
That was basically on this.
$1,003,000.
$1,003,000.
Fifty, fifty million is a little higher. This is just example. We're only asking 1.3, this is a 1.5, that is the starting point. So it's going to be lower than the, for trade reasons.
Okay, but it's going to be a lot more than $100,000 each year. You're going to be in 130, 150. It's at least 130, that's the principal alone for a 10-year bond on 1.3 million. So you're probably around 150 average?
Our first bond payment on the form that we had originally on the billion three was $132,000. That's not due until the second year. And then they all were lower than that $100,000 for our mortgage.
Okay, I guess it depends on what the interest rate's going to be. That sounds pretty darn cheap for not much. Okay, just looking for clarification on that. And just one other question for our road agent. I noticed Putney Road's not on this list. I know people who live on Putney Road and barking about that road for a number of years. It's in really bad shape. Any plans to hit Putney Road anytime soon?
This is basically to overlay, shim and overlay existing roads that are in good enough shape to do that. Putney Road is not. It needs some, quite a bit of drainage work and reclaimed gravel and stuff like that. We're still going to do that work out of our regular operating budget. This is a separate direction for the paving and all of that. So we'll still be doing some of that work as well. I hope that answers your question. I, I've heard mixed things on Putney Road. A couple of people, they have told me not to do anything to the road because they don't like all the traffic that cuts across it. But it is in very rough shape. You're right. It's horrible, actually.
Thank you.
So that, we are still going to fund, well, we'd like to fund our operating budget the way we've been doing it and do construction and do some of those smaller roads. That road, it does go to Boe, yes, but it's a short road and it would be within our, our regular operating budget formula to do that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to back that up by saying, the same question that came up on Morse Road, which is a connecting road off of some of these others, that road as well is in tough shape and in Jeff's standard budget, he's going to try and do those smaller roads.
Ron Slocombe, Tenny Hill Road. Couple of comments and questions. I'm looking at this list and you're saying you're going to do it in two years. I hope you're not relying on poor Jeff to slam him with you in every one of these paving projects.
No.
Because I, because I know that that can be quite involved. No reflection on you, Jeff, and your ability to do it. It's just a lot of work to do. That's just one.
Yeah, that's fine.
All these roads are paved by subcontractors. We do not do any paving in-house, other than occasionally a patch or something like that. We rely totally on subcontractors to do the paving and these would all be done by subcontractors.
And prep work?
And little prep work, but a lot of it, it doesn't need, it doesn't need a lot of prep work. It'll be a combination thereof. Some of it we will do, yes, but as far as the paving, no. And applying the shoulders afterwards, it's much more efficient to hire the contractor to do that because he has the current equipment and crew of guys to do it. We, doesn't mean we wouldn't do some little areas to touch up, but for the most part, it would all be subcontractors. And another thing, just to keep in mind, this is an estimate. And we looked at the surfaces and tried, and I tried to estimate roughly the thickness of the pavement. It's all done by the town. So this could change a little bit. They're pretty generous amounts of asphalt on the roads. So we're hoping maybe we might be able to stretch it out and get a little more done. But we had to use some sort of, and these were the first roads that came up on. So this list could change a little because our roads vary. There's some of these on here are 24 feet wide, some of them are 20 feet wide. And the amount of asphalt has to go down varies. So it's, it's a very educated estimate, yes, if you will, but it's not cast in stone. This is what we're trying to achieve.
Our two. This is, this is a good estimate of the work that needs to be done, but we've had these conversations before and in road hearings and stuff. I think the last number you gave me, we've got like five plus miles of dirt roads in town.
Something like that.
What do we ever plan to do anything about them? I mean, Tenny Hill has been Tenny Hill for 200 years. I think it could use some work. Any of us who live on the dirt roads, it's not just me. We get the ruts in the winter. During the summer, we get the dust. In particular, Tenny Hill is bad because all the heavy trucks decide to use it as opposed to Mills Hill. So that just creates monster clouds of dust. There's a lot of through traffic besides the residents who live on them. There's a lot of throughway. I'd like to see us finally come up with a plan of addressing these. If not, and we're not going to fix them, and we're not going to pave them, we're not going to do anything. Let's talk about other options like keeping truck limits down, local traffic only, weight limits so these big, you know, multi-ton dump trucks don't come up here kicking up the dust and spewing all the sand out of the back of their load. That leaves the rest of us stuck having to clean up our houses after that. I think it died. It's on. It says it's on.
Because they're working, it has its own.
The slide button is up.
Makes it so easy.
All right. So anyways, I'd like to see us come up with a plan to address that. I mean, it keeps getting kicked down the road like some of these have. We've got to do something. I've been there 20 years. I know some of these people have been on these roads for longer than that. And the only improvement, and it made sense, we agreed with Mr. Crosby at the time, we actually took pavement off of our road because the road was better without it. But that was a long time ago. We never replaced it. With some good stuff. I'd like to see us address either fixing the roads or doing something about maintaining and controlling the traffic on one way or the other.
Okay, thank you, Ron. We do have a meeting every year in reference to what the road agent's going to do with his roads. And we've chosen to go down this path now because we've pushed him off a couple of years on this. But I do hear your concern. I live on one of those dirt roads myself. And just coming here tonight, it's all sloppy just because of the weather we have today.
Right.
But, so I know what you're, I know what you're saying. We don't have a lot of footage of dirt roads, but it is time that we start looking at some maintenance on those as well.
Did I just respond to that?
Yeah.
I'd love to pave those. Most of them need a lot of work to get to that pavement. John Cuddy or number one guy in London, he could give you stats, he's a technician with the board and everything on that. But they need a lot of work, a lot of gravel. There are restrictions, they're narrow, they're not wide enough to put correct ditches in. A lot of the people that live on these roads don't want to see these improvements. And it is a little bit incorrect for many of statements. We do maintain with dirt roads. Every year we add gravel foam, create them, we do some ditch work. We don't totally ignore that.
Oh, I was, I was the same thought.
But I mean, there's only so much you can do with this road. And you're 100% correct. Dirt road is muddy in the spring, it's icy and snow covered in the winter, and dusty. But a lot of people choose to live on it. They're bought into the system when it was a dirt road. I mean, if the traffic was increased, yes, I'll agree with that. A lot of that, it gets out of our control to a certain extent because these people have the right to use the road. It's kind of the way it is.
Well, it's just I've seen a lot of roads in other towns, even paved roads, where they put up signage and local traffic only, or whole weight limits, no big trucks. And these are paved roads.
Yeah.
You know, why can't we do something like that if we can't pave it? I understand all the reasons you just mentioned.
Yeah.
We're 100%. Now let's do something to manage the traffic on it.
This is basically, the goal for this is to work on our paved roads that are already in this state. We've actually, we've got to maintain it. And we're getting to the point where we're falling so far behind with all that just material to the point where they need major.
Well, then there'll be dirt roads like ours. Then there'll be dirt roads like ours.
I would honestly say there would be dirt roads, but that is an option. So that's, that's the paving.
Yeah.
There's no, no plans of this, this bond paving here.
Okay, any more questions on the road bond issue?
Jeff Hubbard, Ranger. I'm loud enough that I don't need that. Ranger Way Road, right? Just weird question, but all the roads, I think all those roads need it. Is that, are those just sections that are real bad or are you talking about full length?
It's the whole length.
Whole length?
The whole length. You know, that's where the mileage went. That's the goal, the whole length, is wherever it starts to where it ends.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm John Cuddy, 300 Stock Highway North. Jeff didn't clue me into this at all, but again, I think you all are aware of what I do for work.
Yeah.
Jeff, how many, how many miles of paved roads do we have?
Approximately, approximately 45,000.
45 miles, yeah, 45 miles of paved road.
Yeah.
So just doing some simple math, $1.3 million for 13 miles, $100,000 a mile.
Yeah.
Where I work, where I'm in charge of 186 miles of road, I get $1.2 million a year. 600,000 from state block grant, and then there's an article, 600,000. The people that don't understand how much infrastructure that, that I'm responsible for. So it makes total sense what Jeff is doing. Where I work, I run a number of $180,000 per mile for shim and overlay of roads. What Jeff is doing, granted, we have wider roads, we have more infrastructure, more curving, stuff along those lines. So what Jeff is doing is, makes total sense to me as a professional. And I think, again, one thing that Jeff is saying, for those of you that, that aren't familiar with it, the goal is, and I preach that to 28,000 people that I work for, the goal is to keep a good road in good shape and rebuild the roads that, that are in bad shape when the funds are available for reconstruction and actually full-depth reconstruction. A full-depth reconstruction on it, $1.8 million is not.
I know, I know it's not cheap.
It is not cheap whatsoever. And as Jeff says, drainage.
Yeah.
Driveways, you know, it goes on and on.
He just did that at Grapevine a few years ago.
Yeah. So I'm in total support with what Jeff is doing and I give him kudos for what he's all has. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Ron. Anybody else in the road bond issue? Any other questions? Okay, that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing on the road bond issue and bring it back to the select board for discussion. As the board knows, we've gone over a couple different times. We've avoided preventing the public only because we've had other big issues on our agenda the past couple of years. We decided this is the year that was the time to go there. And also getting these roads done early and keeping the services and payments on level of, of, of course, in class. So that being said, does the board member have anything to say?
I think it was about time. We've, I think we gave Jeff last year a chance to look into this, like the event, and I think he'll have one and he can understand. And I think it's about time we had it done.
And money's not going to be this cheap ever again.
You're getting today's construction for today's dollars and it's going to 10 years in the future. You wait 10 years and do a little bit every year, the price keeps going up and you'll exhaust that $100,000 as you're going to go far 10 years from now.
Okay, I'd like to take a vote. Do you have a Zoom meeting? With that Zoom meeting going ahead, can you hear us out there? Can you hear us good out there on the Zoom meeting? Thank you. Looking for a vote on this warrant article number three to appropriate the sum of $1.3 million for the design, permitting, construction, replacement, paving and installation of an estimated $13,000.
Joseph Exel, Florida, article number three is written.
Okay, non-Jeffs?
Motion.
Motion. Motion to the second. Non-Jeffs?
Right, yes.
Okay. Now the select board will open the public hearing on the proposed 2022 budget and warrants. Does everybody have a copy of the warrant articles in hand? That being said, warrant number one is just to choose the necessary town officers. We have open selectmen for three years, town moderator for two years, supervisor and checklist for six years, trustee of the trust funds for three years, tax collector for three years, library trustee for one year, library trustee for three years, assessor for three years, cemetery trustee for three years, ethics committee for three years. These will all be by official ballot, so those will be done during or before a meeting. Warrant article number two is to choose hogries the ensuing year. That will be done on the floor. Warrant article number three, we just spoke to and took a vote on, three to zero. And our operating budget is under warrant number four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,783,551 for the general municipal operations with $306,000 to come from unassigned fund balance surplus. The amount excludes appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. So this operating budget that we have here, we can go through. We have executive of 143687 proposed for 2022. Selectment of 8683. Elections, registrations, final stats, 30,846. Town clerk, elected official salary and benefits, 75479. Financial administration, 122097. Tax collector, 19240. Treasurer, 8240. Board of assessors, 1925. Assessing department, 28066. Legal expenses, 39600. Personnel administration is 297979. Planning and zoning is 16606. Government buildings is 210925. Cemetery is 24400. Insurance is 35203. Police is 487091. Fire is 119473. Building department is 82558. Emergency management is $1,000. Highway department is 578764. Road agent official estimated salary 2022 is 22565. Solid waste disposal is 299024. Welfare is 15267. Parking recreation is 300. Old home day, memorial day is $6,001. And library is 108132 for a total of $2,783,151. Our revenues, we'll discuss separately here, but the revenues we have on hand are $1,118,559. We have a surplus that we're going to go over above and beyond the 5% that the DRA makes us keep aside or asks us to keep aside for good governmental management. So we have that surplus of 306, $306,000. Net to be raised from taxes is 1358592. Estimated 2022 tax impacts is 340. You guys will see that surplus we're applying to there, that $306,000. I'll show you later where that's coming from on our revenues. And what we did is, we had those excess unassigned balance surplus and we're applying it direct here to keep this budget as flat as possible. I'll go down through the budget next. And we did it similar last year where we applied $294,000 to that budget. And for the fifth year now that I've been a selectman, we've been able to keep that budget either flat or slightly lower each year by applying those excess revenues. Does everybody who has, wants one, have one of the revenue and expenditure sheets? Okay. Start with the expenditure sheets. On the first page, under general government, there's a slight increase in there. Our budget for 2021 was 138. Our request budget is 152. There was a salary increase of $500 for each of the three selectmen and a 3% increase for all of the other positions available for that department. And we did increase part-time hours for one of the employees from three days to four days, which increased it by $13,000. Okay, going on to elections and registrations. If anybody had a question during these, just speak up because I'll be looking down to try and read this. Elections and registrations, we have the 3% increase that we proposed as a board for our payroll. We have an increase in elections to cover the elections. There are four elections that increased it by 6812. The next section's financial administration. There's a 3% increase there that you're going to see again for the payroll positions and a slight increase on computer support. Assessing department, there's a slight increase on payroll, 3% overall increase of $87. Next section, legal, we left it completely flat, but we adjusted where we put the numbers. Different departments on different years depending on different things that come up through planning and zoning and tax collector and board of selectmen. As the issues get hotter in each department, we adjust that legal around as we need to, but we didn't leave it flat. Personnel administration. There was an increase in the NH IRS contributions, a decrease in the mileage, and added health insurance. Health insurance decreased by 6%.
Retirement.
And that's the retirement system. Thank you, Mike. The overall increase on that department was $10,441. Planning and zoning, the only increase there was a slight contractual increase of $215. General government buildings. We decreased the town building maintenance improvements from 200 down to 150,000. We may increase that back next year, but we thought it was proof with the other warrants that are on there this year to bring that down. And we still think there's a sufficient amount in there to take care of the buildings that we have. As you guys know, over the last year, we've done some substantial maintenance on our buildings and we're getting everything, in my opinion, mostly caught up at this point. We have a couple more buildings that we're going to need the money for this coming year. So we kept it at 150. So the total decrease on that section was 39,000. Okay, under cemetery, the cemetery trustees requested increase to complete projects in the town cemeteries. Their budget had been flat for many years before and their increase in their budget was 8,700. That's slightly down from what they asked for. They asked for more than that, but as selectmen... selectmen, we've decided to curtail it just a little bit and spread out their repairs over several years. I do want to take my hat off to cemetery committee, they're doing an awesome job there. Our cemeteries look better than they've ever been. We're starting to spend the money on this budget line that has never spent in the past to try and keep them up. And it's just like everything else, if you're going to do a good job on a department, you've got to spend a little money to get it there, and they've been very improved with their money. Okay. Property insurance, on the next one, under insurance increased by 2824 over the 2021 amount. The police department was basically a level budget. Thank you, our chief, for getting that squared away. It had a slight increase of 4802, which, when you consider all the changes that happened to that department over the last year, you know, it's great to see that budget come in like that. Okay, the next one, the fire department has a slight decrease. He presented a level budget and was able to reduce their budget by $264. Thanks to the fire department for that. Building department, presented a level budget services with a slight increase due to the 3% CPI. Emergency management had no change. Highway department, they presented a level budget services with a 3% CPI for payroll. There was a $22.50 increase per ton for this state salt bed, which increased the budget line by 20,000, an overall increase of 25323. Transfer station increase represents a 3% CPI, and an increase of part-time line with an overall increase of 14,000013. We added some additional hours in there for the part-time employees to try and keep up with their services down there. Okay, under welfare, there was an increase due to the 3% CPI of 124. Parks and recreation, that's just a placeholder in there, the budget is under old home day memorial day. They kept it flat at $6,000 and $6,001. The library budget was able to return some of the surplus, resulting in a decrease of $1,186. So when you take this budget and you look at the differences between this year and last year, basically, it's mostly the 3% CPI increases by $51,000, and it's basically a 1.87% of increase over 2021 budget. And you can see most all of the department heads come in very, very level with their request, and that's well appreciated, it makes it easier job for the select board.
Dave, one question.
Go ahead, sure.
Not to be too vindictive, and I don't mean this a reflection on anybody, but all the departments are getting a 3% raise, but the board of selectmen got a 22% raise. How do you explain that?
Go ahead, Bob, if you want to say anything.
Well, that's a question. I believe that compensation should be at the time of election, and since I'm not running again, I don't have to benefit. So I raised it because they hadn't raised the rate in 18 or 19 years. So that's why I increased it.
Right, but it's an elected position, and this isn't a full salary, this is just more of us a token, if you will, for doing the job, so trying to understand why all of a sudden it's a 22% increase.
And it is still just a token, believe me. I want to point out a couple of things. As we funded the different town departments and employees there, we did some different funding with COVID money for the town employees, and selectmen never took any more. Our functions through these last two years have increased, and our meetings, our Zoom meetings have almost tripled from our previous years, going through these different things we've had to go through. That's not the only reason. Anytime it's ever come up, it's the last five years I've been a selectman, we've never taken an increase on those five years, even a small amount through the years. So it's still just a token, and nowhere's there covers the amount of time that you provide as a selectman. Bob just thought it was time to do it, and we were voting in favor of it. Whether I'm a selectman or somebody else is over the next year, so that's just what we've decided. Go ahead.
Dave.
Go ahead.
Will that raise be going in front of the people?
Will it be going where?
In front of the people to be voted on.
It will be included in this budget, so if this budget gets approved, it will be approved.
We don't have a line item to pick the vote. Anything for.
Yeah. Any other questions, Ron?
No, I could raise a little while, but it won't make a difference, so.
Okay, Bob, so we're here for a good one tonight, so.
Well, I mean, you said it's an increase in work that you've been doing, but I've also noticed this, selectmen, every year for quite a while, just saying, you know, every other week during the summers. So, and this salary is in effect when they used to meet every week, so now you're saying going back to every week is down much to work. It really isn't, it's just putting it back to where it used to be, where the board met every week and did their business, not every other week, because it said they didn't have a business.
No, it never had anything to do with how many weeks. We've always had a summer schedule where we would come to meetings every other week, and the winter schedule when our budget season is, we come every week. That has nothing to do with the pay at all. It has nothing to do with.
Recording progress.
No, but you said the reason for the increase is because of working.
Because of COVID, we've had substantially more meetings, not just Thursday meetings, we have special meetings to try and adjust our stuff to the state and whatnot for our policies and procedures.
No, and I understand, not a lot of dollars, a $1,600, a gazillion dollar budget, but it's a principle I'm concerned with.
I don't have anything else, I don't have anything else for you, but that's what it is. Any other questions on this?
Did you guys cover parks and recreation?
Yes.
You did, sorry. $400 to?
Placehold.
It's basically a placeholder. What happened is, we had a parks and recreation committee, but it was combined with having kind of old home day and fireworks, and so we had these things separated on the different line items, where right now, we don't have anybody coming to us, the parks and recreation type events. We've put the money down into the other section there, so they can use the money during old home day and do other things with it.
So, again, I don't know, I was just asking for maybe self-benefit here, but, you know, I'm looking at parks, we got two basketball hoops on, old telephone poles, a beautiful field that's not used to utilize, because there's no one, you know, facilitating anything. Is there anything like, parks and recreation would cover stuff like that for our kids to actually come to town to utilize, right? Or my wrong? So $400 is really just throw some dirt underneath the basketball hoops in the winter, so you don't slip a ball when you shoot around.
There's no one on the parks and rec.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, nobody wants to be on.
In the parks and rec department, and there's nothing to help it.
In the past, no, it's a good question. In the past, we've had a, we've had a. The thing is, the money was used on a little excursion trip in December for a shopping trip to go to Boston. That pelt by the wayside, when it would take a dozen people in a bus, stop in Boston to go shopping, and very little was spent on children, per se, in my opinion. And the volunteers which served in the committee essentially went away. We've had no one to step up to the plate to help with that. And so if we had a citizen effort where we could get volunteers to come and help, we would probably refund that line with vengeance. We would probably do it as long as it was a supervised activity, in the sense that we're just going to throw money at something which for a committee that's doing nothing. And in the past, again, excursion, a shopping excursion to Boston, in my opinion, was not benefiting our community to any great degree.
I 100% agree, I'm not necessarily one in favor of like, money.
And so, we didn't want to remake the line, in the event that if we do get volunteers in the future, we want to have that line available, so we can fund that in the future. The thing is, we're not saying no, but right now, we have, you can only do so much when you have no volunteers.
I'll concur with Mike, and like you say, we meet there every Thursday, if somebody wants to develop something for the townspeople and kids, as long as they check in with the school and make sure it's okay to do with the school. Jeff Trexler, I think he has something to say.
Yeah, Dave, just representing the school here tonight, the school has a grant, and the PTO is adding to that grant, and there's going to be a proposal to put in a brand-new half-court. We're trying to find appropriate location here on the site with the painted top and everything, new hoops, one low for the kids off on one side, and the regular height for another place. So we're trying to improve some of the facilities here that are available for both the town and the kids, and that should happen in this upcoming year.
I think I might have put my foot in my mouth to bring it up, but, so now, the reason what sparks it for everyone, just out of curiosity, just like, who is this guy talking about, to nowhere? I get to coach basketball for my two young boys, right? So there's one guy running the whole rec department that everybody facilitates doing, just one example that, from my experience, and the guy's overworked and just volunteering and doing the doodle for all these kids, and it's kind of cycling out, because those kids are growing up. Right, so now, my wife and I are volunteering to coach, and we never realize how far behind Dunbar and Rec Sports are. The example I did use was the courts, because I knew the PTO, the school's kind of stepping in to jump in there, but, dare I say it now, I'm speaking up, so again, put in the mouth, but, you know, we're all parents, and, you know, why isn't that, yeah, put in the mouth? It's just a disappointment to see that being so overlooked and not cared about.
Welcome to Dunbar.
Yeah.
It's not overlooked, it's under man.
What's that?
Not overlooked, it's under man.
Hello?
It's voluntary, right.
Can I just speak on that? About four or five years ago, the small group that were volunteering for organizing kids' events and community events with our kids petitioned the town to take all their revenue that they were, it was getting put into the general fund, to put it into a special checking account. So right now, there's 14,000 to 17,000 in that checking account, that if you get an appointed individual that is able to manage and track legitimate expenses and whatnot, they have the authority to withdraw from that fund. And that would be to buy the hoops, to buy the basketballs, to buy the uniforms, and I think his name was Johnson was the last name? He was pretty much the sole person that was managing a lot of those expenses, but there are definitely, there's some revenues there for you to be able to tap into, if you feel that that's a worthy cause, and we don't control that money, you guys do.
No, that's, and I can't even find anybody to do a clock, I'm putting out Facebook posts, hey, 30 bucks, someone from 1 o'clock, help us out.
Okay, guys, just a point of order, I'd like to make sure that you come up and use the microphone and talk from here, just so we don't have a side meeting going on. But it's great to see you stepping up and volunteering, we're going to make sure.
Waiting for someone to say it, that's why I'm saying.
This is what a small town's about, is to speak up. When you speak up, you get there. I spoke up a few years ago, and I'm up here now.
Yeah, look what happened.
Hey, go ahead.
Can we put the sports banners back up in this gymnasium?
I'll let the school, I'll let the school speak to that one, because we don't control that.
Yes, I'll take that back to the school board. I know they took them down and they painted, but that was last summer. So I'll go back to the school board and ask them to make them back up.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Jeff, Fred Marlowe from Stock Lane, Jeff was saying, I asked that question maybe a few months ago to the principal, and he says they all have to be cleaned before they go back up. So they're in storage there.
Okay, thanks for that answer. Okay, on the expenditures, does anybody else have anything else before I go on to the revenues? Okay, going down through the revenues worksheet, we increased the land use, current use tax increased by $30,000, because we have several new houses that we think are going to come up, that are going to have that current use affecting it, so we brought it from $15,000 up to $45,000. On the yield tax, we brought that down by $5,000, to lower that, it was at $10,000, we brought it down by five. Other taxes, we kept flat. Interest on taxes, we brought down by $5,000 to be conservative, it was set at 15, we only got 3429 in last year, so we set it at $10,000. Business and licenses, this is your motor vehicle permits and whatnot, we kept that flat, it was 675, we kept it at 675. We had an increase last year to 787. And instead of increasing that every year, sometimes you get a surge of new cars being bought, and they actually go down the following year, the second, third year, and the fourth year, and as the vehicles get older. So we want to be conservative, not keep increasing that up and then get caught with our paperwork not lined up. Yeah, we could do that. Building codes and permits was set 20,000, we kept it flat at 20,000. They did bring in 23,000 last year. Go ahead, Ron.
I just have a question on that one. On the previous page, you mentioned that you were increasing the land use change because of a lot of new developments coming into town.
Yeah, well, not a lot of new developments, a lot of new lots that we think will be sold.
Right, yeah, I know there's several subdivisions going in, a lot of lots to be sold, but also would that not correspond to additional building permits?
It may increase the building permits, but again, we have that at 20,000, they were at 23295 last year. We're expecting those are going to be large houses, Ron, but we don't know, so we try to keep it fairly conservative at this point. This conservative approach has allowed us to put some of this excess revenue back towards our tax base at the end of the year as well. Licenses and others, stayed flat at 705. We had a slight increase of $160. Let me just get back to the previous page here. On governments and other groups, which represents the milfoils grant. Income from other departments, we kept flat. It was set at 50,000, we kept it at 50,000. Sale of town property is flat, interest on investments is flat. So proposed revenue for 2021 was 1,097432. We actually received in 1,331.629, and we're proposing an increase in that of 1,118,559, which is a conservative increase of $21,127. Anybody have any questions on the revenues?
I concur with the philosophy of this board, not to over-project the revenues, because if we over-project and we don't collect those revenues, it'll come out of your back pocket at the end of the year. In other words, we plan not to spend.
In other words, we plan to spend a base point revenues and if we can't collect those revenues, someone's going to pay the bill and we don't want to go at the end of the year saying, by the way, we're raising your taxes because we overestimated their revenues. Philosophy of this board is to underestimate them and return any excess to the voters, to the residents. Go ahead.
Well, by that same token then, the conversation we just had, land use change taxes are tripled because you say with all of this couple developments coming in, there's going to be a lot of properties taking place. But at the same time, you left the building permits flat. And I would expect that if you're going to sell a new lot, you're going to have a new building permit. So if you're going to be conservative on one, don't triple the land use tax potential revenues. Maybe double it, but don't triple it.
So I, I, I hear you, I'm clear, because one doesn't seem to jog with you.
I see what you're saying, Dean. Building permits, because we don't know the style or size of the houses on those lots, we haven't done that. But we do know on the current use, because of the size of developments and the current use penalties that will be coming in, even though that number of 45,000 seems like it's tripled, it's not actually being that conservative because we think we're going to get in substantially more than that. Building permits may get reflected by that, but I don't think that it's going to increase up that much on the building.
I just want to say that a current use penalty will average about 10,000 to 15,000 per disqualified lot. So if you have four or five disqualified lots, the town will recoup 50% of that and 50% goes to conservation, whereas a building permit could be a small conservative home on the lot. And we don't have control on the, what they charge per square foot at the building permit level. And then another thing also is the revenues for, for what is constructed on, with the, through the building department stops at April 1st or stops at March 31st, so you're, you're overlapping two years. Anything that is pulled in a permit after April 1st will not be reflected in value for the town for additional revenue. So there's a lot of moving pieces, there's your new assessment, there's a building permit issued, and then there's your disqualifying your land when it's disqualified less than 10 acres.
Is it disqualified of the land, so when they, and this is part of what's to learn from planning work too? When a new lot is formed, at some point in time, there's a percentage of that lot that's going to come out of current use. Is that done at the time the lot is formed or when the building permit and they actually build something on it?
I can answer that for you. If there's a larger piece of land that's already in current use, when they take a smaller lot out, like five acres, until it gets sold, it doesn't get paid to the town. So you can have your land subdivided into five acre lots if you own a 100 acre parcel and you had on a road frontage. As long as you don't sell those parcels that can continue in current use, it's when you transfer that and it becomes a building lot that the use changes and the town gets the money. So the use change comes in substantially later. So the current use penalty on a tar road versus a dirt road, they have different amounts of different areas of town.
Well, I guess, Jeff, I do want to remind you of your.
Better design for it, no worries.
Exactly what he's doing, yeah, they thought of that 200 years ago.
Okay, while we're in revenues, I'm going to go over some other revenues that the town has been fortunate enough to come across this year. And the select board has, I thought, used some wisely, using some of these funds wisely. I'm going to go down through these and we might not go into their exact uses until later in the warrants. But we had a property claim from insurance on Kimball Pond Road. Some of you may have noticed that we had the house that had a large tree drop on it. And we had our, we had the town highway department take that house down and crush it out and haul that off. And so we had a check, a revenue check of 93,396 from them. And we had an expense of $17,000 to do the work. We had a property claim with our insurance for asbestos and the testing of it. And we got that revenue back at 2,706.35. So we ended up with a revenue balance from that house of 79,152.31. And so it gave us a substantial amount of money here to work with on our budgeting process. We had another, as I told you earlier, the DRA likes us to keep 5% as a minimum fund balance retention. And that 5% is 540,488. Right now, we had in that unassigned fund balance, 638,415. So we're taking out $97,000 out of that, keeping the 5% that the DRA would like us to have as a town with not many bonds and using that as part of surplus. The surplus budgets I went over earlier, between the total surplus and the budget, was 177,079 and the surplus budget was 253,921. The excess revenue surplus was 144,977. So we have a total estimated revenue source from those items I just listed of 575,977.31. We have another ARPA grant that came across the Board of Selectmen's Office, where this year we received 150,700. And in June of this coming year, we expect to receive the other 150,700. We've already accepted these revenues of the ARPA grant. And I did some extensive reading through the ARPA grant to see what we could apply it to. And we've come up with some ideas of applying that as well, which we'll go over later. So the total ARPA grant was in total $304,000, of which we have a pending $7,000 septic system to redo the septic system on the fire and police department building here that has failed. So we have a remaining balance in there of 294,401.48. So I just want to review those revenues and we can bring them up later on as we use them. So getting back to Article Number Four, is there any other questions in reference to the town appropriating 2,783,151 for general municipal operations? No questions being asked, I'll bring it back to the board. Bob, do I have a motion?
Okay, I will, I want to make the motions, we'll do Article Four as soon as.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been second. Null, Jess? Okay, so three to zero as far as our general municipal operations. Mike asked me to remind you, I'd said it earlier, but we did apply $306,000 of that general surplus that I'd already discussed of the 575,977. We put $306,000 right to the bottom line of this to keep your taxes as flat as we can and to keep that tax rate. The estimated tax rate impact is 3.40. Okay, going on to Article Number Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for additional costs associated with paving. This sum is to come from taxation in 2022. This warrant will be null and void if Article Number Two passes, which is the road bond. So if the road bond doesn't pass for some reason at the meeting, we want Jeff to have the $100,000 he's normally used to having for additional paving in his budget. So that one will get null and voided right on the floor if Article Two passes. Everybody understand that?
Should it say null and void instead of null and void? Just a detail.
Yeah, I think it should. It's got null and void. Null and void. Null and void.
Another, another minor point, but we're saying that the warrant will be null and void, which is, as I understand it, the whole, everything we vote on. Can it be this article?
Each article is all a warrant as well.
Each article's warrant, okay, good.
Go ahead, Jess.
Just a recommendation, I know Article Three is a ballot vote, which will take time to process. So you may not be able to act on Article Five until you get the results of that ballot vote. Maybe Article Five should be pushed further down the warrant so that we can do other business while we're waiting for that ballot vote to wrap up.
Yeah, I think that might be a good recommendation.
Does, this is a bond vote, does the polls, are they required to be open for an hour on a bond vote? I think they are.
I know that we've done that in the past, so I'll, we'll probably have to double check that.
Yeah, just a recommendation, maybe want to shove that down. If you're moderator wise, you can continue with other business in the meantime and pick this up later on.
Right. Any more questions on Article Five? Okay, that being said, Mike, do you want to bring that to a vote? Okay, motion made, Bob, second it?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, second it. Null, Jess?
I thought we were done, sorry. I thought we were going to go till I, knowing that we made this down. And then is it possible to go to the other more articles and skip over Five? Or do you need to have it moved down?
Fred, go ahead and answer that, since you probably want to go on us.
Yeah, so it's been done in the past. Go to Article Six, then take up Article Five later on.
Okay, and that's what I'm looking for because we can leave it right where it is. We can vote on it, because if we vote on Article Five, as written, it may not be Article Five. It may be Article Eight.
Like Jeff says, this is, Article Three is a ballot issue for warrants.
Right.
The polls have to be open so it can be ballots for an hour.
And the other thing, I think by leaving it by it, it's show that they're kind of paired up. You know, if one passes, the other one's going to get voided out, so I think. Okay, null, yes to the article, and we leave it at Five?
Mark, tell us.
This one's going to be a little bit longer. As we go down through this one, I'll try and fill you in on the funding of this. But I'll read it in its entirety first. And this is in reference to this Dunbarren Town Hall Restoration Committee coming with the accessibility to the entire building, handicap accessibility. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $697,485 for the purpose of constructing an addition and renovations of Dunbarren Town Hall Library to allow for second floor community use in compliance with ADA and code compliant access to the second floor. The addition provides a compliant stair, elevator, and ADA toilet rooms and other related owner expenses and contingencies. Furthermore, to fund this article by using the ARPA grant received in 2021 and 2022 in the amount of $294,401 to authorize the acceptance of a contribution of not less than $74,141 from the Dunbarren Town Hall Restoration Committee and to furthermore authorize to withdraw $269,977 from the town of Dunbarren Unassigned Fund Balance as of December 31st, 2021, with a balance of $58,966 to be raised by taxation. Further, and to authorize the selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project and comply with all laws applicable for said project. And to authorize the selectmen to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. So starting with that article, we just did in a firm bid earlier today. And we reviewed that bid of $697,485. And we took that bid, we asked, I think, eight different companies to supply us with bids for this project, of which only one actually came in with a proposed walkthrough. It was a mandatory walkthrough required by the architect's office. And only one came through. After that mandatory walkthrough was shut down, we had two other companies call the architect to see if they could get on the bid list. But he felt it was too late and they did reach out to, I think, eight or nine other companies. The selectmen reviewed the list at one of our prior meetings, all substantial companies. But most companies out there right now are very, very busy. And so being where this thing had been worked on over the last three or four years to get to this point and we got the final drawings in, at the 11th hour, complete for the bidders to bid on, we put it out to bid to trade, make sure we were able to make this public meeting along with our town meetings, all of the other requirements we have to be to make this thing come through. Going through the money. The first thing I want to start with is we used $294,401 authorized acceptance contribution of not less than $74,000. So the $294,000 was from the ARPA grant I had spoke about earlier. That ARPA grant, the town of Dunbarren had four years to use this money. We had only used the $7,000 out of the infrastructure for the septic system on there. I read through and gave a report to the selectmen's meeting two weeks ago, where I felt that we met all the requirements because this was going to give us a meeting room that we could have Zoom meetings in that was other than using this community room, which is not always available, and our selectmen's office, which is much too small for meeting even of this size. And as we were going through the requirements for that, we also got a letter from them saying that we could use up to $10 million of that ARPA grant for anything that the select board decided was a reasonable fund. Looking at these revenues that we have this year, we thought that this was a great opportunity for the town to have this project funded without going to bonding. We're already going to have a road bond, we have a school bond. We're a town that normally doesn't have any bonds and we're trying to keep it as reasonable as possible for the townspeople and taxpayers. That being said, we still want to keep our tax rate as flat as possible to the previous years as this board has done since I was on it. So we took the excess revenues right out of $306,000 and applied that towards your taxes as we applied $294,000 last year. Then we put this ARPA fund to this thing here. And then we spoke with. the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee and asked them what money they had left over from their, um, fundraisers, uh, which I want to take my hats off to those guys, they raised over a hundred thousand dollars for this project over the last several years, which was a huge undertaking. They paid for the entire set of plans, which was done by Dennis Myers, the architect that did the original proposal. This project many years back was a million and two. And we've reworked and revised it down to enough to get this thing down where it's, um, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, which we think is a doable number. And, um, we've worked very hard, the committees worked very hard to get that down, uh, reducing the amount of infrastructure within the building and the drawings, and trying to get it to be reasonable for the taxpayers. So I take my hat off to them for giving us the seventy-four thousand dollars to apply this, which was raised for. And then, you come down to our excess revenues, like I said, we applied three hundred and six thousand dollars to our tax basis to keep that down. That left us with a balance of two sixty-nine nine seven seven to come from unassigned fund balances. And I want to repeat, we still have five hundred and forty thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars in there to keep our five percent, uh, which the DRA requires, which when I became a selectman, just so you guys know, there was twenty-six thousand dollars in that fund. So the select board has brought that up to a level, uh, that is very acceptable, especially where we don't have a lot of debt within the town. So when using that, we ended up with a balance of fifty-eight thousand nine sixty-six to be raised by taxation for this project. I've been a selectman for five years, and I don't see when we've ever had a year that we've had this many revenues to be able to use, not only to reduce the tax rate, but to take care of a project like this. Uh, this tax rate impact is fifteen cents. Uh, the fifty-eight thousand dollars to get this entire addition put on here. And, uh, the selectmen have worked hard trying to negotiate balancing numbers and trying to make it as workable as possible, so. That's the background I have on this. Bob asked me to join this Dunbar Restoration Committee. Four years ago, Bob, maybe?
At least three.
At least three, but maybe four, it seems like longer. But, um, it's been a long process getting these plans redrawn, getting everybody to agree on certain things, to keep it simple, but to meet all the codes, but without overdoing it, so the town is not spending a huge amount of money with a lot of balancing lessons. Um, it's a very conservative approach, I think, and, uh, I'd like to open it up for questions.
David, David, you're a smart guy, I'm a smart guy. For municipalities, they're always putting out their hands for the ARPA funds. I know there's a lot of strings attached to ARPA funds. Davis Bacon Wade Rates, Buy American, Build American, all that good stuff. Is it, the, was that a requirement, or I, and again, when I've read that, who is administering those ARPA funds for buildings like that?
Well, I read these, these are coming from the Treasury. There was no Buy American in there, it was a thirty-one page pamphlet, I spent five and a half hours reading it. I don't have tonight, you didn't bring it. I don't have my requirements, but I'd like to provide you, John, with a copy of the requirements that I read forth to the other select board after reading through it. Uh, this project is ideally something that they would like to fund through that project, and I think it fits in the window very good. Um, you could use it for other things, as well as infrastructure, bridges. You know, the bridge we had a couple of years ago, it'd been great if the money was there then, but it wasn't.
Roads?
You could use it for septic systems, roads was not part of the infrastructure, that's under normal taxation. So, they're very specific in what they could use it for, and then they went through all of that process, and they could see larger towns and smaller towns are having trouble spending the money within their requirements. They came up with another, uh, another letter to lean, loosen the belt, in other words. And, um, I read through that letter, we fit in it fine. And then they came with a third letter just after that. All of these last couple of months, and they said that these towns can spend up to ten million dollars without any type of, uh, anything added to it, so.
Any strings attached?
Those strings, as you know from reading these government documents, they kind of make you go backwards and forwards all through it.
Yeah.
So I contacted the Treasury and I asked them about this. We actually have a, a call into them and we have a record number, just to make sure that we've done our due diligence as a board, to make sure that the funds can be used for.
Because I've been told the same thing, it's, here's the money.
Yeah.
Spend it. And then, if somebody's going to administer it, so I'm dealing with Department of Environmental Services for a three-point-six million dollar pump station.
Yeah.
What is the criteria for that pump station? Not, it's, it's to better the town, the community, but it's, there's no design, there's no, um, extenuating circumstances that we need to build that pump station. It's thinking for the future. So when I look at it, and I keep telling my boss, if Holbrook comes in and they have a failed wastewater treatment facility plant, or plant, that's where those money is going to go.
Yeah.
So, I'm covering my butt by following, you know, dotting every eye and crossing every T, so.
And as John said, I, I did that, and I did that due diligence work, and the reason I did it is because it's going to come back on us as a select board.
Yeah.
So I did that due diligence, and I was so happy to see that, led up the following week. I did all that work for nothing, basically, but at least I know it fits into what is allowable for those afterneeds, so.
Well, if you're lucky, you'll get a five hundred dollar rate.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Yeah, usually the DRA requires you to put the total amount that you ever wanted to get there, and they tell you this is where it's coming from, here, here, and here. You've got the, uh, the six hundred ninety-seven thousand, but the last paragraph, the last couple of sentences, further to authorize the selectmen to apply and attain of any grants and so forth. Will the DRA make you put that in first, before they total them up?
We put in every grant that we have, uh, we actually, in part of our excess revenues, we use the, um, Gopher money, the excess COVID-nineteen money we had, as well as this, um.
Right, I understand that, I just go back to what the DRA, I remember years ago, they, it was a big to-do, because you didn't have, you're going to put the total amount that you want to raise appropriately.
Yeah.
And you say, you take some out of here, it's going to come out of here, come out of here. But that last sentence, to apply for any grants, will they maybe put that, will you go for grants in there as a total?
Well, it says up to, so, the reason we put that in there is because if during this process, some other grant becomes available that we could use for this project.
Yeah.
We'd like to be able to do it, and then maybe not spend as much out of the revenue, which should go back to the tax.
My question is, will the DRA make you reword that, they've done that in the past?
I don't think so, because we did send this by the town lawyer for approval, and he's the one that sent it, write it up this way.
Okay.
DRA.
Oh, DRA rated it as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Fred. Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, you had indicated you received one bid, um, and you mentioned the six hundred ninety-seven thousand. Is that the amount of the bid, or is that the amount of the bid plus contingency and other things that you're anticipating?
No, that's the exact amount of the bid. In fact, I, I worked through that with Dennis Myers. Um, several times. I wanted to make sure that we didn't have contingencies in there that would never actually get back to the town, as a lot of times happens during these construction processes. Um, so I spoke with Dennis Myers to speak with the contractor about that. We had originally put in a ten percent contingency if this was going out to bond. And, uh, we put in a ten percent contingency for the town, as well as a ten percent contingency for the builder. And when you add those up to there, it just continues to grow this out. So we set this out as a direct bid that the contractor could do. And when we looked at the contingencies in there, as you know, we have that building making fun of run into something that we deem as, you know, um, something that wasn't in this original proposal, which is really broken down. And we'll look at that as a board and try and do something with it then.
So you do have a, a opportunity to have contingency money elsewhere if something comes, I mean, a renovation project, an old building, you never know what you're going to bump into, as you get into it, so.
Yeah, and, and we thought about that, we. My thought was, I didn't want a contingency out there that somebody's going to try and eat into that wouldn't come back to the town by having that building being responded there. If it's something essential to the building, maintenance of the building, and keeping the building up, then we're going to work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just asking, who was the bidder?
Uh, this was. I'll give you a list of some of the bidders that we had in place there. We had Dennis Myers, we had Sullivan Building Properties. What was the company we used for the upstairs? CCI. CCI. I'm trying to think of the others. We had eight or nine top quality construction companies, North Bridge, um, all of the ones you can think of. And, uh, they weren't all either too busy on existing projects, and had too many clients that wanted them to do word about that without change at all. So it's a pretty tough market out there. We've been finding that through the years, um, the last couple of years, whether it's an electrician job within the town, or a painting job, I get very limited amount of bids back. But we did do our due diligence in putting it out there with the property. And, uh, you know, gave them a lot of time, it was on construction summary.
Yeah.
The two that called after the fact had saw it on construction summary after the bid date walkthrough had closed. So, and it's pretty common, they asked if they could get on the list, but it's pretty common, the architect doesn't allow it.
And they lost two bids the day before, that's why they called.
Yeah. And the, uh, you know, the Dunbar people, all, but he hired Dennis Myers to do this whole bid process for us. He will be coming to our public meeting, um, so whenever any questions can be made, myself is the lead, I'll sort of, as far as maybe answer questions, because, you know, we're the best people trying to, you know, just line this up.
I got one. Um, try not to be too direct, but what's, why, and what's the purpose, what's the benefit to the overall community to have an upstairs?
The purpose of this room?
What?
The meeting room.
That top of that library?
Yeah.
Is going to replace this?
No, it's not to replace this. This law would be a community center where we can have, um, large, large meetings and voting. Some voting may take, like, take place in there. I'm not sure if you've ever been to one of our selectmen's meetings, but it's down at the end where you register your vehicles there.
Yeah.
We have enough room, if you space me close, six feet apart for maybe twelve people in there.
Right.
So, and then when you bring a meeting to this room, um, a lot of times there's echoing going on, especially with Zoom, it's hard to hear. And so then we're looking for the intermediate area where the town can have oversized meetings. John's been on the zoning board for years, sometimes you get a, a public outcry when the gas station was coming to town. Uh, the selectmen had one where wood was being cut off a lot, close to some of the butters. The room fills up, and you have to reschedule the meetings, a lot of times this is not available. That's not the only use. So, we've developed a policy, and some of the uses are going to be for the overages of zoning, planning, select board meetings. There'll be library uses up there, where the library was used, there's multiple uses, I should probably run the policy there, but there's a huge amount of resources, there's a play stage on one end and one. And right now, we have a building that meets all of the today's current codes for the second floor, except for the ADA accessibility. So you have a building that was built in nineteen oh nine, that still meets all the code requirements except for that, and we haven't been able to use it in the past twenty years or so. So we want to get back to being able to use that by doing the whole two hundred fifty people, by holding a bathroom upstairs and downstairs on the entryway, as well as a walkway, and a loop with the cheapest possible elevator. It will allow that access to the building, it also has to be seven five feet away from other access to the room.
So, like, when, uh, looking ahead and other things, you're going to be asking for increases to the budget to, you know, uh, hopefully increase potential revenues, like with the transfer station for recycling equipment to do things, that's a revenue stream, so you invest money, you get it back. So, why wouldn't we take unused funds and apply it to something that can generate revenue where there's a need, before we apply it to an upstairs where we can hold a meeting?
Well, this project's been worked on for, like, seven or eight years, and they've had open door meetings for anybody to come to and discuss that. There's a great, um, there's a great need for this space within town for any community type meetings, whether it's a four-H meeting, what we did make sure in the policy is that we're not using it for things for out-of-town people. So everything that we had developed on our policy uses was in-town people, uh, looking to have things. Even if you had a basketball rec night, you wanted to schedule that thing for silence. You didn't want to come here because this building was already being used. You, that's a perfect example of something that can be done, whether it was for football, or for that, or for four-H. There's a lot, a lot of town meetings and function areas.
So is there no, sorry to take question after question, I'll stop after this, so if we increase and invest this much into the upstairs library, there shouldn't be any need or soon-to-be request of increasing the size or upgrading of the town hall offices? Because that would be needed for.
The only upgrades I can see the town hall is to try and make that building, that's an old building, that's actually old in the town hall. Try and make sure that that building is, uh, we just did an environmental study on it, we did an air quality test, just to make sure the air within the building is okay for the people in there. Uh, there may be a air handle that's required in there. But we're, we're going through the process with that building now, so that's a question I can't really answer a hundred percent, but there's always going to be some needs to grow. For the, for the short term, I guess, there won't be any.
Right, so that's, I just said I'd stop, so.
Uh, I'm going to give, um, go ahead.
Yeah, as another use for that building, as this town grows, you won't have enough place to put enough ballot, uh, voting booths in this gym. As an example, for a presidential election, for every, uh, hundred registered voters, you need one voting booth. Okay? And if you cannot meet those requirements, the, the town has to provide voting some other town. You've got to pay the town's expense, transportation cost. So there's an auxiliary place for, for voting. Because the last two presidential elections, this place was marred. You can only have so many for a presidential election. So that's another use for it.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, well, the other thing also is that, uh, there are a lot of committees in town, and that, that, uh, room that they're using now is, um, used all the time. And if one committee can't make the meeting, has to postpone that meeting, it's no place to, you know, you can't just say, well, we'll do it next Tuesday, because there's already somebody out there Tuesday. So you need a, an alternate place for people to meet.
So, I'm, I'm going at this way, I know, so, to make sure everyone sees it, that, say I'm, I'm totally against it, I'm not, I'm open-minded to it, but the objection is going to be, what is the value that this is going to bring? You say, hey, we can be comfortable and have meetings better. You're going to have a bunch of people, and then you're going to reiterate or revisit the comments and say, you haven't come to meetings, we've had meetings. We just get hot-button topics, people come in here and shut it down after many years of hard work. So, outside in, no one just added an extra value to me to make me want to put a million dollars into that, where the growth rate of this community isn't looked at from two, three years, it's, we should be looking at five years, because we have a substantial growth rate in this community. We do that, and then outgrow that, that's a great point to add that extra space there, but in two years, you'll probably be outside of that too. And now we're looking at the town building, and we're back here, because we don't have enough room, so we can put a million dollars in an old building. So I, I'm just, today great, what about five years?
You were so, you were so correct, as this town grows, we're going to have expansion. We have a building opportunity, we have opportunity here to use a building which has been vacant for ten-plus years. And the original purpose was, I, I used to say, it used to be a town hall. The committees worked diligently to, how can we create a meeting space usable to a multi, multi-faceted communities, uh, activities across town? And they've done a great job, and they brought it in under budget. You realize, they, they just created a, in the last, communities, uh, safety center, eight million dollars. If we had to create a building just for that square footage, so all that many people, we could talk about two to four billion dollars. This is a, this is a great opportunity to use a building which we already have, which is, right now, it's been sitting there, wasted, the last, the, fifteen years. So, the thing is, this is an opportunity that, it's, it's like, you know, they say, grab the low-hanging fruits, this is the low-hanging fruit.
Well said.
I'm glad you have questions open, because those are the questions we're going to have, um. I'm glad you have questions open, because those are the questions we're gonna have. And I didn't, I didn't bring my policies and procedures for that new building, because that shows all the uses on it, and we did have this kind of meetings back, but I'll make sure to have a town voting meeting, so.
Yeah, I'm just giving you a different perspective of how someone who doesn't attend meetings, so you're gonna have the passionate people who put all the time and effort into it, and then the people who've just been waiting to vote it down. So you have to be able to present the value in which it delivers, and if we just say, I can be, I can have more people in my meetings.
And, and you know, we want to be a forward thinking board, but as well looking at the bottom line for our taxpayers as it has me do it.
Yep.
There are two pieces of land in town fairly close that we've been keeping an eye on. This may come up in the future here quickly. So, I appreciate your question, because those questions are questions we're gonna get from the building in that morning as well.
Believe it or not, it's an inexpensive amount of money to spend for an additional meeting space. As the town grows, yeah, you're gonna have to invest some money, and hopefully, as the town grows, they'll be able to absorb that cost, because the numbers will go up for a newer structure versus rehabbing another meeting space. I've had meetings at the town hall where I had to be at two meetings, in fact, one of the people was here. But we had to be at the, two meetings at the same time, so we weren't from one meeting to the other, we were back and forth. Just because they had little room to use, because they had nothing else to use for their meeting, and they got scheduled for the same night.
Ron, I did have the, they brought me a copy of the use policy, so if you'd like to read that before your question.
It's a draft, but I think it's, it's, it's a close exit.
Let me read it through just so you know. Dunbar Town Hall's second floor use policy, who may use a second floor? Town boards and committees may use a second floor only for overflow crowds that cannot be accommodated in time off speed cars. So that being said, we want to make sure that we had overflow crowds, that we knew were gonna be at a meeting, that we had the first place to use that meeting room. The library may use the space when overflow crowds, or as the lecturer, guest speakers anticipate other libraries sponsored activities, i.e. book groups. None, no groups should be using the second floor while the library is open as it creates unacceptable noise levels in the downstairs. Any exceptions to this limitation, sorry to be deterred by the notice, like in accordance with the library and the library trustees. Town organizations may use the space for organizational meetings for functions open to the public. Such groups include, that are now limited to Dunbar Historical Society, American Legion, for Dunbar, Dunbar Guardians of, Dunbar Scouts groups, four H. Fire department, meetings, library groups, school events, community plays, concerts, reticules, dances, et cetera. Provided however that no one can monopolize the space.
Did you say you can't use it when the library is open?
That's right.
So how many, how many hours a week is that?
There's a tin ceiling in the library with no insulation between the two, and no way to insulate that floor properly without taking the tin down. So at this point, we've decided not to have it during those hours. All of our town meetings are in the evening at seven, there's only one Thursday that they're open until eight. They don't open until ten several days during the week. And so, and then the weekends are why I open too, so. I don't have the hours, but I will, I will make it up to those hours.
Again, that's a draft, it's something to change, we're gonna, we're gonna just hand it back before we come up with a formal policy, but it gives us a first blush of what we're going. Question I can leave.
Ray Plant, news point, question, comment, is there a revenue plan for that space, for those groups that will be meeting in there, the town committees, things like that, as far as rental fees? I know Bo does that for their old, so there's a return on investment if we're gonna spend the money. Can we start generating money with that space?
No rental fee per se, but because we were thinking of having a fee for, someone to come in, open the building, oversee the building, make sure there's no problem with the building, and then a cleanup fee. And then maybe a security deposit that's outside, I mean, not a town committee. We were just looking at that, because we like to have it maintained well. The thing is, it's one thing to come in there, bring your trash, and dump trash, well, who's gonna clean it up? That's extra expensive to town, we don't want to use this to incur expenses, but we're not using it as a money making operation. It's more of a service to the community, not a money making operation, but we want to have it revenue neutral there. So there may be a small, like a deposit you gotta put down if you're gonna use it, there may be a small cleanup fee, maybe a small fee to pay for the person who come in, securely open the building, secure it, close it up, and at the end of the day. Those are things we're considering in a policy.
Yeah, Mike is right, we didn't want to, we didn't want to invite outside of town users, like weddings or receptions. There, there is a note on the bottom of that policy, you guys can all, you'd be glad to get a copy, that if they're having a, a town elder or something's having a funeral, and they want to have a small reception. Say somebody's been a selectman for twenty years and they passed away, and they want to have a small reception. The bedroom is in conjunction with one of our town churches for that reason. But other than that, there's been no provision to have anybody from any other town come to that, to that point.
Me specifically?
Yeah.
Well, I disagree with not making it a revenue stream in some way from the security deposit or deposit, but I'll admit it's, it's part of a conversation, it's part of a conversation, so I agree.
But we're gonna have a discussion on that, the policy, as I said, is a first draft.
Yep.
And we get to the starting meetings.
We'd be welcome to have you come to those meetings and put your input in there as a resident, you know.
I'm only a guy who shows up to the meeting when I want to, voice a bunch of things when I go home.
Yeah, but when you come to the meeting, we're gonna keep you.
One, two, you, see you next year.
All right, any other questions? Okay. I'm gonna abstain from this vote, and let the other two selectmen make the motion and vote. And the reason I'm abstaining is because this contractor is a contractor that I've done business with, like sell building materials for living, so I'm gonna abstain from that vote.
Yeah, I'll move to approve article number six, it's written.
I'll second that.
No discussion, no. I, you know, we had a lot of questions, but some of this stuff's gonna be developed if, if it comes to the base, you know, with the second floor. Policies as far as uses may become more elaborate, and as far as whether or not there's shared expenses or whatever, you know, I mean, they may develop that over time, so there's still a discussion.
I'll say, no, no discussion, I say, yes.
Mark tell me, yes.
No abstains?
I abstain. Okay, moving on to article number seven. To see if the town will vote to raise the property to some fourteen thousand dollars to be added to the reevaluation capital reserve fund established in two thousand and three for this purpose, as summarized in the capital improvement plan, this sum is to come from taxation. So this is the town reevaluation, that dollar amount has been set, make sure that we cover the expenses in that reevaluation. Any question on this list? None being said, going back to the board, I made a motion for article number seven, and it's read.
I'll second that.
Question made, second, Malchus?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, article number eight, to see if the town will vote to raise the property to some of ten thousand, to be added to the transfer station vehicle equipment capital reserve fund established in two thousand and fourteen. For this purpose, as summarized in the capital improvement plan, this sum is to come from taxation. We have the dollars incentive adds to the taxes, that is three cents of the tax base. The ten thousand dollars, we reduced the original amount, because we've just upgraded the ten wheel we use there to drive the, the hopper stand. The trash bins, the hopper, back and forth, we spent a large one on that vehicle. Yeah, and we have a, we have a pickup truck around here, and we also bought a baffo loader to squish down the bins. So we dropped that down to ten thousand dollars, just to make sure that we keep funding that capital reserve for future funds, but nothing right on the, right on the agenda.
Okay, David?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Well, on the, on this, I know we've done several vehicles there, the pickup truck, the tractor stuff. I know we've been talking about maybe having to do some work or replacement with a big truck. Do we have any kind of a schedule on one you think that we might be due for some kind of a vehicle replacement, please, some of this stuff?
Well, we've just spent nineteen thousand dollars on that truck refurbishing it, repairing the frame, upgrading it, and so on. We have a truck that's pre-conditioned. A lot of people, like primarily with all the electronics and emissions on vehicles nowadays, would die for that truck. So we're gonna try and keep that on the road as long as we can. I mean, if we can use it another twenty years, that's what I'd like to see, I don't know if that will happen, but our mileage is not that high on that vehicle, it's a mach, it's a heavy duty off-road truck, and I'd like to just see us continue to use it as long as we can. When we have to replace that truck, we may even, we may even be looking into an outside bender haul in for us, because the expense of that truck's gonna be so much.
Yeah, I just didn't know for any other vehicles we might be looking at, I don't, you've had this skid steer for a while now, does that need some work?
Yeah, he did just buy some replacement items for the skid steer, and someday he is gonna upgrade that, and that's part of this. By keeping ten thousand dollars in there, we'll keep adding the fund to maybe replace that skid steer another summer.
So you got plenty to carry for a while, I think that's happening.
Right. Okay, Mike? My motion to whom our committee is written?
Second.
Malchus? Okay. Article number nine, to see if the town will vote to raise the property to a sum of eight thousand, I'm sorry. That's where it's on, it's seventeen thousand, oh forty-five. The reason why it's not written with dollars and cents is because we've got an improved quote, as recent as today on that. So it went down from the eighteen thousand originally, it's seventeen thousand, forty-five dollars for the purchase, purchasing, the installation of a can crusher. This sum is to come from other side, non-balance surplus, no amount is to come from taxation.
Well, then why do you have a tax rate?
It is, you guys just amended it this morning.
So it is to come from taxation?
It is coming from taxation.
We, we've been going through this the last couple of weeks, and I was off last week, and I gave Bob and Mike an assignment to meet with the transfer station manager to see if that, the purchase of these, this can crusher, would help us in this department to get additional revenues, because what it's gonna do is increase the amount of the bundle when he's taking it, so we'll do less trips and take more weight with the trips. And I wanted to offset the additional labor and make sure that the labor and the machine made sense for his department. And they came back with me with a report earlier today that said that it did, I'll look like speaking.
I was a little bit taken back, Mike, I thought it was a little bit excessive, but when I heard the transfer station's sales pitch, I was completely convinced, it's a labor saver. It's gonna improve the quality of our recyclable products, for example, aluminum, it's gonna be a magnet out, so it'll actually remove the steel cans from the aluminum cans, increase the quality of our recyclable product, aluminum, and allow us to get a higher price for it. It'll crush the aluminum cans, so instead taking, probably, we're not sure, but sort of our number of trips, at least by two per year, is gonna be like send a four container of aluminum recyclables.
Yeah, I'm not challenging the item here at all, it's just, in one sentence, you say no amount is to come from taxation, and then you put a tax rate underneath it, which is?
You seem correct on that one, that was a less than adjustment this morning, because the bid came in late, so we didn't replay the numbers. We just moved the numbering without changing the rest of the article, we apologize. So it is gonna come from taxation, four cents, but I think it's, I think it's well, well, I don't know, but I think it's a well deemed expenditure, which will make us more efficient down at the transfer station. Go ahead.
The, I gotta look through it, but I think I have memory now, forty-eight thousand in revenue from recycling last year, and if revenue predictions for two thousand and twenty-two is twenty thousand, and we're adding a twenty thousand dollar investment for increased revenue, but we see a significant projected dip?
Uh, yes and no, but this is gonna last, it's gonna last.
Oh, I know, I know this projected revenue from last year to this year, if this is included in it, wouldn't it?
It, it all depends, the thing is recyclables, I'm gonna close the transfer station, you can't predict, you can't predict the price of recyclables. Like a lot of people down, and they stay flat, so, because recyclables are the crap shoot, am I correct?
Right, well, pretty much my whole thing behind this is, one, we've been short-staffed, as everybody knows, for a year now. And the way we're doing it is really, really intensive, we have a giant trash compactor. And before the cans are in the crushing, everything's manual. This machine, we dump it in it, it'll go up the conveyor, it'll crush it, and dump it in the container. We'll put in a bigger container and haul it down to our big ones, it'll get more compaction. I, when I go to selectmen, I was like, I don't want to tell you that I'm gonna cut my trips by, I'm gonna do one trip a year, but right now I'm doing six. I can't tell you that, because I don't know. I would like to think that, right now, we can, on an average, about thirty-six hundred pounds of aluminum cans into a fifty I dumpster. I would like to think that we could double that. I'm gonna guess it's gonna be more than that, but if I tell you double, I wouldn't be commenting with that. So in the scheme of things, less trips means less wear and tear on that truck, which is, right now, about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to replace. And basically, you're not getting the good qualities you have right now. So less trips, less labor, it is, and the quality of the material will be better, the markets are volatile, they're all over the place. You bring more material, you can get a better price for it, so it, that's my whole theory behind this, try and cut some labor, cut some bad on the truck.
Point out that, you pointed out, Mike, that if we have contamination of aluminum cans, we're gonna take steel cans in there, our, right, we get penalized for that. So we won't get as much for the price, and so this will ensure we have a quality recycled product.
I, I'm actually questioning the projec, projected revenue.
Again.
So I, I'm gonna agree.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's, again, it's rather, rather conservative than over-project, because we over-project, I guess, we have to come to you for more money to give ourselves, we don't want to do that.
If this machine isn't just for aluminum cans, your steel cans, it'll, right now, we just load them in the dumpster, I get six thousand pounds in there. And we should be able to double that. The other thing, so, not really a little premature to say it, but I applied for a grant through the state. Kind of this, I was gonna get discussed with the board how to handle it, but I was awarded twenty-nine hundred and eighteen dollars that potentially could go towards a purchase price of this. And then I had an auction in the beginning of next year to actually put in for another grant, so. There are some options to try and bring the price down a little, you know. Over there, like I said, the revenue part of it, I, I know where you're coming from.
I, you can't get help, it helps with.
Thank you.
It helps.
Yep, no, and I, the revenue, I see where you're coming, you know, it's a larger amount here, but then we're asking for a little amount here. I will tell you, last year's markets were really good, this year's markets are, right now, they're down, they're in some incidents. This year's markets are, right now, they're down. They're, in some instances, they're, you know, you're getting a hundred dollars or something at a time, and now you're getting sixty. It's all over the place right now.
Yep.
Thank you. Would you want to add something?
I'm just gonna add, it'll pay for itself over time. It won't be immediate, but according to the brochure that was handed to us, it crushes 10,000 steel cans an hour. We don't generate that many steel cans. So I don't think it's gonna take the same impact it does in a facility that does have that kind of usage. So I know, I think it's probably gonna be a real investment, because it is labor-saving and it's it's been really difficult to get people to work at the transfer station. So just having a machine that takes them out of something that they have to maintain all the time, and go through the bins and try to pull things out, is gonna give them time to do something else.
You wanna see something more? See what he's doing with aluminum, pulling steel out of the bin?
Okay, we've gotta move on here a little bit, so we keep through the rest of these articles, but I appreciate your questions.
Make a motion to see Article nine amended. The sum is to come in from taxation.
And the dollar amount?
The word dollar amount is $70,000.
I'll second Mike's vote. And, uh, Noel, yes?
Mark Delius.
Okay, thank you guys for the additional work. Okay, moving on to the warrant, Article ten, see if the town will vote to raise appropriately the sum of $60,000. Dollars we get for fire truck emergency vehicle capital reserves on establishment. In 2014, its purpose, as summarizing the capital improvement plan, this sum is to come from taxation in 2022. This hasn't been backed to 15 cents. We moved it up from 40 last year to 60. This fund was substantially higher than it years ago, and as a board, John brought it down when we bought the truck for the highway department. The last time we had a major purchase, so that we could give a little bit more money to the highway department to keep that from coming from taxation. So we'll bring it up to 60,000 this year. We may bring that up higher in the next coming years because at some point we're gonna have to use that money for a new fire truck tanker, which is somewhere between the $400,000 and $600,000 range. We did use $120,000 out of that fund last year, as you can remember, when we came for a warrant article. Get a tank on the back of the tanker truck that we have currently, because we leak it. So that's why we think that $60,000 is appropriate in that case. Any questions? I move the article on the second. Second. Okay, so we moved the article as, first and second. Okay, Article number one, see if the town will vote to raise the toll rate with the sum of $56,000 to purchase a new police cruiser with equipment and installation of equipment. And on this appropriation, I refer $10,000 from the state vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund established in 2020, with the remaining $56,000 coming from taxation. This is a 12-cent impact. We had sent this fund up with $10,000, actually more than a few $10,000. Every two years, we could replace a police vehicle with their special duty fund and $20,000 from this capital reserve fund. We came to a situation this year where we had a vehicle go down on us, and we just barely received it. The other vehicle we had ordered from the previous year. So the vehicle took almost a year to get in, or maybe just a little bit longer, and we had a vehicle blow up on us. So we're down one vehicle, and we had the older vehicle, the Crown Vic, went to auction and actually produced about $7,000 back to our revenue stream. So unbeknownst to us, selectmen, other than knowing every two years like we expected, we're back to you with another police vehicle just because we had one go down. And one of our older vehicles turned in as well, so we have one more vehicle that is just running on the residential, just the green cars. The former chief of the Christmas field.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. So currently, our fleet right now, we have four marked vehicles. We have one vehicle that's assigned to the chief, chief of police position contractually. We ordered that after town meeting in March of last year to replace the 2008 Ford Taurus, which is now sitting behind the police station. It's gonna be sold at state auction this year. When we ordered our vehicle in March, come November, there still hadn't even been a van assigned, so the vehicle hadn't even been built yet, which is pretty common right now in the vehicle market. The only reason we were able to acquire a vehicle is because the dealership ordered a wrong color for another agency and they didn't want it. So we got extremely lucky. But from when we ordered it to when it was actually placed in service was about nine, 10 months. So that's one of our current vehicles. Another one, we got, and it took about the same amount of time in 2020, about eight, nine months from order to road time. Two of our remaining vehicles, they're both 2017 Ford Interceptor SUVs. And what we, what we'd like to do, when you factor in the engine idle hours of police cruisers, because they idle so much, the wear and tear on the engine is still taking place. We idle a lot, whether it's at a call or running radar, what have you. Both of our 2017s, when you factor in the engine idle hours, are both over $200,000. And it reaches a point with a police vehicle where it just becomes a liability when you're running them with that high a mileage. So our hopes is to acquire a vehicle at town meeting, have that approved, rotate one of those 2017 vehicles out to be used as a detail car and backup patrol car, which right now we don't have. The vehicle that had the engine C's while an officer was responding to an emergency, that was a 2013 SUV that was temporarily assigned to that officer and was gonna be rotated out to be a secondary patrol vehicle and backup detail car. That had about 150,000 road miles, plus probably about the same in engine idle hours. So we're just, we're trying to be proactive with the lead time on vehicles right now. Even if we order it in March, it's probably gonna be, you know, eight, nine months based on history. So we just, we wanna be proactive in trying to maintain our fleet and make sure we're not running vehicles with extremely high mileage. So, and as Dave said, the Crown Vic, we sold at state auction, the 2008 Crown Vic. The 2008 Taurus, it won't pass inspection because of rust issues, so that's gonna be sold at state auction. And then the 2013 SUV, that's obviously not running right now. That's gonna be sold at state auction as well. It was about $8,000 to replace the engine, and it's just not financially responsible to do that, so we're just gonna be rotating that out and getting rid of that vehicle as well. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Sure. Couple of questions. The money that we receive for the option vehicles, where does that fund go? Does that go back in its capital reserves? Is it going to general fund for?
General fund. Right into the general fund, so it went back to the $306,000.
Okay, so it doesn't go, is there any way to put it back into this fund? So we're not taxing it? It's a little elaborate here.
You can put in the warrant.
I'd like, I'd like to see the income from those vehicle sales go back into the vehicle funds and not just.
It would add, it would add to the foot run into the warrant article to try and put those funds back in there. And because we put that money from the general reserve above the $540,000 we have in the rainy day fund right back to your taxes, one way or another, you're gonna get that, so. To us, it's kind of, typically, we do a sum once in back, we try and turn toward that department for use. So you are writing that as.
Okay. Another question. You mentioned wear and tear on a vehicle with idle. How much of our vehicle usage is for your official duties as opposed to what I call private duty? Like, you know, we're assisting some road crew down in Bedford or something like that, do their all-day, do a traffic flow.
Sure.
How much of, how much time do we spend with vehicles in that as opposed to your operating or patrol gear on the clock for Dunbar?
Yep. I don't have those exact numbers. I can say that 2021 was a very fallow year for police details. We didn't have the staffing. And officers work those details when they're otherwise off-duty. So they are using Dunbar vehicles. The town is compensated. $18 an hour, every hour that a police cruiser's in use, plus a $15 administrative surcharge fee that goes into the general fund, so while it does create wear and tear, it also creates a significant amount of revenue. I think our 2020 cruiser, I think we put 20 or 30,000 from the special duty fund towards the purchase of that vehicle.
Is any of that going towards this one?
No, our special duty fund was depleted in 2020, and in 2021, Joe typically works a lot of the details. He was covering a lot of shifts because of our staffing. So 2021 didn't see a lot of detail revenue. But I can say that, you know, the details, you know, at least as of right now, they're pretty rare that we're doing them. They're just not coming in like they used to. We just don't have, really have the staffing at the current moment to be working on like we did. And it's a double-edged sword because you are creating warrants around the vehicles, but you're also generating a lot of revenue.
Right, just whatever $18 bucks an hour is enough to offset it.
Yeah, and I did talk with Mike, we're gonna be looking at, every, every town has a different, different detail rate. And we're gonna be looking at, you know, potentially reconfiguring our, because we wanna be competitive, but we don't wanna press ourselves out. We're not being called to fill these, fill these details, so certainly. And the, the up to $56,000, just so the public understands, that includes the cruiser, all of the equipment that goes in it, and the mobile radio. The mobile radio, you're talking about $6,000 or $7,000. Those are not cheap at all. And unfortunately, with the way the market is right now, Motorola went up about 10%, so it's kind of a cost that we have to, we have to eat, so.
And last question.
Yeah.
We've also got Article 12. So out of Article 11, we take $10,000 out of the fund, Article 12, we're gonna put it back. Why don't we just forget Article 12 and just say Article 11, the whole month, come taxes?
Because we wanna keep that capital reserve fund going. It seems odd that we're pulling it out and then putting it back in. But this way, people vote on Article 12 as putting that amount of money back in there. So we're pulling out the $10,000, it's in that capital reserve fund, and then we're putting it back in there. But we wanna make sure that the people are voting on that vehicle that year, or what's put in there, and know that we wanna refund it. If we continue to see the police department doing less and less special duties, we may increase that to 15,000 or 20,000 every year, just to make sure that we can cover the vehicles every two years without coming to the taxpayers with a, you know, an impact on it. I'm the one that started, I couldn't believe, we always can't believe people for a warrant article with no capital reserve on police vehicles, and every other department had capital reserves. I said, why haven't you? The police department too, so in 2020, I'm the one that started that. And at the time, every two years with their special duty fund and $10,000 from this, so $20,000 from their capital reserve, we could pay for a vehicle without any increase in taxation to the taxpayer every year. It's not a free thing, but we've added it slowly as every capital reserve count. So with, with what we're going through now, we might end up bumping that up next year to 15 and trying it, but we wanted to stick with the 10, because I knew that with the previous years, that did work.
And Ron, to your question, it actually eluded me at the time, but the vast majority of our details, like I said, would be worked by Austin O'Leary. He was using the 2008 Crown Coria exclusively for police details. So that car generated probably tens of thousands of dollars for the town, but certainly didn't notice anything because it was, you know, 12, 13 years old, so. Unfortunately, it kind of became the blues movie we had to sell, but it did, it did make a lot of money for the town.
Made a lot of money at the end, too. I just couldn't believe the amount of money that we got out of that on the auction. We never get that, like I said.
Yeah, and we were all very surprised.
Somebody above that guy.
Somebody did.
Okay, any more questions on this, police vehicle? Second. Article two moved in second, Noel Chess. Okay. Article twelve. Okay.
Second.
Article twelve, we moved in second, Noel Chess.
Mark Delius.
Okay. Article thirteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriately the sum of $15,000 for that highway vehicle capital reserve fund established in 2022, its purpose, and then summarizing the capital improvement plan, this sum is to come from taxation, four cents. So that's for our highway vehicles. As you know, we just got a new highway vehicle last year, a larger dump truck, six-wheel dump truck. And the other one was two years before that, and so we're in fairly good shape there. So we're keeping that down at just $15,000, because we knew there were a lot of other warrants. Those trucks are very expensive, so we will probably increase that to 20,000 or so next year, but 15 is approved this year. Any questions on that?
Second.
Article twenty, Noel Chess. Okay, Article fourteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriately the sum of $10,575 in purpose of improving the maintenance guidance of age and power cemetery. And authorized in the draw, $8,843 dollars for the cemetery trust fund maintenance care established in 1988. And to furthermore draw $1,732 from the cemetery expendable trust fund established in 2016. No amount comes from taxation, zero impact. Any discussion on the floor in reference to that? Okay, bring it back for motion. Sir, if we made second, Noel Chess.
Yes.
Okay, Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriately the sum of $2,020 for the no-foil control of Orham and to authorize in the draw $1,010 for the invasive plant species capital reserve fund established in 2018, and to authorize to step in to accept a grant from the state of Manhattan, D E S. And the amount of $1,010 known as the variable no-foil control grant, no amount coming from taxation. Any discussion on that?
I move Article thirteen, Mr. Second.
Noel Chess. And the last article, if we see if anything else.
Hey, David.
Oh, it isn't, I'm sorry. Good one. Go ahead.
Oh, you didn't open up for public on the, on the, how big of a problem is that still? I mean, we've gone for years, we've spent a gazillion dollars cleaning it up, and then it went to nothing, and then how much is it really doing now?
This is, this is for the testing. I think every year they come back.
$2,000 for testing?
They do the diving test on it. So we've been clean now, I think it's our second year. I haven't exactly cleaned it all upon in Dunbar. And so in order to get the state funding there, that you can see that they have the $1,000, we have to take out of our capital reserve the other $1,000.
Yeah, so imagine.
Otherwise, if we get off the grant list, Ron, it'll take a long time to try and get back on. So that's why they're trying to keep this funding.
Yeah, because it was costing us $2,000 to do treatment. Now you're telling me it's costing $2,000 just for a diver to go look? It's way more than that. Yeah. Yeah, some of it's pretty expensive.
Ron, the last two years, we've had warrant articles for diving. The state D E S typically will use their divers first, and if they find that there's too much without the handle, they will contract through a bidding process. This diver, which then means it's priced on our warrant. The last two years, we haven't had to spend any money. So even though there's a warrant there, you're in the, to get grants and stay in the grant pool, but we haven't had to use, spend any money.
Ron, Bob has just clarified, this is actually our third, we've been clean in Dunbar. Then people come down for a Orham speak every year because they check the boats on their whole summer schedule for the weekends. They actually pay somebody to sit out there.
Yeah, I knew they were doing the boat checks.
So we really wanna stay on that cram program and keep it in while that's, a lot of boats in and out of that Orham pond. lot of boats in and out of that cornepond, and, um, to keep that pond clean as well as our other ponds, and keep checking them off, and to stay on that grant schedule is real important at this point. We don't wanna fall off that grant schedule, and it's real tough to get back.
No, I know, like, you also, the cleanup on something is very expensive, yes.
You know, I think we've peaked up to a twenty grand, a little time, twenty or so grand, and they, you know, and then, uh, this last treatment that we had three years ago, oh, this is gonna be our third year coming up, uh, the, the divers are going to look to make sure there's nothing coming back, and not going to, it would've been pretty successful, you know, and hopefully that stays, uh, at a minimum, at the level of police.
I think, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, we already did vote on it, it's a six one thing. Thanks for bringing the question up, Ron. Moving to Article number sixteen, do we have the signature on this?
We do.
We do.
Three degrees.
Okay, so we have signatures from private residents.
Yep.
Okay. All right, this warrant article was added by a resident, and we wanted to make sure that we had the proper signatures to move it forward. Um, we, the underside registered notice in the town of Dunbar, New Hampshire, request the warrant to be inserted into Dunbar, which shall be considered on the 2022 town meeting. New Hampshire Resolution to Stop Puppy Milk Pipeline by Petition Twenty-Five and More Eligible Voters in Town of Dunbar, to see if the town will go on record opposing the retail sale of dogs, cats, and pet stores in the town. This resolution is necessary because the majority of dog and cats sold in the pet stores are sourced from large scale, inhumated, commercial, free meat facilities, commonly called puppy mills. The record of this vote shall be transmitted in writing and written notice by the selectmen to the town's agents, to the town's state legislator, and to the governor of New Hampshire by petition. I don't know many puppy mills in the town of Dunbar, but there's a possibility, Captain, can I open this up to a public court party conversation? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board. Do you have any discussion on the board? I'm gonna vote, it's not, no, this article. So, two abstains and one, uh...
I don't think you should be voting on it. That's a petition.
Yeah.
It's not a town matter.
Yes, financial item.
Really? Well, it's just recommended by the board or not.
Doesn't matter. Still shouldn't be voting on it.
Dave?
Go ahead, Brad.
Article been put on there legally by twenty-five registered voters.
It was.
Bring it up.
Yeah, I made sure we had the signatures as well.
Yeah, I'm saying that, uh, you can't vote...
Oh, so our voting is not, okay. Okay, Article seventeen, we have the reports, agents, officers, deputies, and other officers here, two chosen to pass any vote of either two, and Article eighteen, transact any other business that may be related to the project. And that is it for warrant articles.
David, on, on Article number, on warrant number three, suggestion to, to add to that, that the, uh, poll will be open an hour? Yeah, an hour longer?
A little hour before.
Is that technically in there, trying to... This law.
Okay.
With the warrant issues, you're gonna vote by ballot, and the polls have to be open for an hour, but it doesn't stop you from transaction of the business.
Yeah.
That's where the good place would be, to bring up Article five, and say, we're gonna vote on that, once we get the results of Article three.
Okay.
So, he can do seven, six, seven, whatever, let it on, and then go back to Article.
Okay.
Well, question for your moderators. The hour poll, clock starts at the time that we open this to a ballot, not at seven o'clock when the polls come in.
Correct.
So, you can't just say seven to eight, it will be an hour, whatever we open at night.
He's talking about having it worded underneath the hour.
Right.
Because once, because once, he would say, are you ready for the vote? And then, that's when you, how would you start it?
I got, 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 just extend this an hour.
No.
My bad.
Don, I have something, can you stay here for a minute?
Say, man.
What's that?
Okay, we'll check with something, we'll, we'll, thank you, Fred. So, then, take care of the warrant articles, and I'll close the public hearing of the warrant articles. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, um, we'd like to acknowledge Dawn Larson for Small Town American Civic Volunteer Award. Dawn was selected for nearly seven hundred donations in forty-nine states. Dawn was recognized as the top one hundred national award winner of state of volunteers and volunteers. Many of you know Dawn, he volunteers for a lot of fundraising items that we have through the town, race across Dunbar, um, the Cemetery Trust Dean Chair, um, he just does an awful lot, and he's set up all of our local shots we've had for COVID-19. I mean, there's just one thing after another, he comes out, but he keeps us on our toes, so Mike graciously submitted Dawn, and I'd like you to present that to Dawn Larson. Dawn, come on, come on up. Give us a shout.
You know, Dawn does so many good things, but the thing is, sometimes they gotta keep them in line. He talks, he, he tries to bend the rules, and the thing is, but the thing is, he's effective, he makes things happen.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Thank you.
And, uh, with that being said, Dawn, Ron, you make sure to let everybody know that on Saturday, the twelfth, booster shot's gonna be given at the library from nine to two. Um, another thing...
All the maxing, just like in five years or not.
Yeah, so another thing Dawn has done, so, so, thanks for all your help, and, and...
Thank you.
Okay, there's one more announcement we have here. Um, the BTO meet the candidate virtual night in VIA soon, on Tuesday, February twenty-second at six P M. The link is posted on the town website homepage. So, we have several, uh, as I read earlier on, there's several positions within the town that are, uh, gonna have to use a time zone.
Hi.
And, uh, we're letting that, on the boarder side, so... Yeah, it's at six P M. Just wanted to let you know. I think that's the end of our meeting, any more public comments?
Can I suggest that we move to a definitive town meeting?
We've, we've already done so, it's gonna be nice right there. So, Dawn, bring your gift back, so we can do it at the town meeting as well. Don't hang it up quite yet. I'm gonna show you off a little bit. All right, make a motion to adjourn at nine twenty. The big thing, all the...
You're very beautiful. So inspiring to see you.
No, you can ask.
I'm not very good at public speaking.
Well, you cannot, yes.
Well, me, that's right.